Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to welcome you to this meeting on the first meeting of 2025 here in Council Chambers at 6:00 P. M. Roll call, please.
Alder Person Murphy.
President.
Masias.
Present.
Razak.
Present.
Timian.
Present.
Finch.
McNeil.
Present.
Castro.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
All right, we move to item number four, our Oath of Office. Oath of Office for regular commission appointment as police officer to Kyle Yater, effective December 11th, 2024. Chief call.
Thank you, Your Honor. Members of council, I appreciate the time tonight. It's always a really fun time to recognize our new officers and to just give you a little bit of perspective on where we're at right now. As you know, I usually bring the officers to council once they've completed their probation. Officer Yater tonight, as you'll hear from his bio, was previously a police officer in another agency, and so he had, he served a one-year probationary period. But over the last several years, we've really struggled with our staffing. We've gone up and down, as you know. I've reported several months in our status information reports about our staffing. And prior to when I came to Moline, our staffing number was 81. On April 5th, 2022, the council and then the mayor signed our staffing increase to 84, and you probably saw on the news recently, we finally achieved 84 officers onboard. There's still some, several of them in training. But Officer Yater was actually the 81st officer in our rebuild, and he was hired on December 11th, 2023. And as you're going to hear in his bio, he's a lateral officer. So our lateral program has really worked out well. We worked with the Police and Fire Commission, as well as you, to modify the rules so that we're able to have lateral officers. And we've actually gotten three, and Kyle was our first one in that process where we brought a lateral from another state onboard. And so I wanted to let you know that your work is meaningful and has really helped our staffing, and those officers that are already certified, and we can get them right back on into the training program. It cuts it probably down in half at least, the length of time. So the lateral program is very effective. So I'm going to invite Deputy Chief Andrew Rad to come up and give you a little bit of more information about Officer Yater before the Oath of Office.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. Today, we have the opportunity to administer the Oath of Office to an officer who's completed the probationary appointment. In this case, Officer Kyle Yater was already a police officer, as mentioned by previous, by Chief Galt, and he served a one-year probationary period. Officer Yater is originally from Mylan, graduated from Sherrod High School. Kyle then graduated from Blackhawk College and attended the Southwest Wisconsin Technical College, where he completed the 720-hour Police Academy, which is longer than the Illinois Police Academy. Officer Yater was hired in Moline, at Moline, on December 11th, 2023. He was previously employed as a police officer with the University of Wisconsin Platteville Police Department. He received a department commendation from UW-Platteville in March 2023. As Chief Galt mentioned, he was one of our first out-of-state academy laterals. He was certified in Wisconsin, and we sought to, we sought to reach a waiver with the Illinois Law Enforcement Training Standards Board, and we received that. Officer Yater successfully completed that Let's Be Receptacle training program and passed the Illinois exam, and began the field training program in January 2024. Once he completed FTO, Officer Yater has been assigned to third shift, where he has performed remarkably, even receiving a shift commendation in October 2024 for a drug and firearm arrest on a traffic stop. Officer Yater has completed the initial training in his probationary period. Chief Galt approved the regular full-time appointment and forwarded it to the Board of Fire and Police Commission, who has voted to bestow a full appointment to Officer Yater. I'd ask the mayor to administer the Oath of Office.
You can raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I, Kyle Yater.
I, Kyle Yater.
Having been duly appointed.
Have been duly appointed.
As a police officer for the city of Moline, Illinois.
As a police officer for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere to the compiled statutes of the State of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere to the compiled statutes of the State of Illinois.
The Moline Code of Ordinances.
The Moline Code of Ordinances.
And any Illinois rules of professional conduct.
And any Illinois rules of professional conduct.
Applyable to police administration.
Applyable to police administration.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of police officer.
Of the position of police officer.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
We'd like to honor the family of Officer Yater, who's here present today, which is Jeff, Laura, and Emily Yater, and we'd like to ask his mother, Laura, to come up and pin his badge.
If your family wants to come forward and take a couple of pictures, they make good Christmas card photos here. Thank you, Mayor. I yield the balance of my time to our esteemed fire department.
He's always a tough act to follow. Brandon, do you want to do this? I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yes, so this is the Oath of Office for Promotion of Engineer Brandon Tomlin to Lieutenant, effective January 1, 2025.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm honored to recognize Brandon Tomlin on his well-deserved promotion from engineer to lieutenant. A prob. 2003 graduate, graduate of Rockridge High School, Brandon pursued higher education at Western Illinois University, earning his bachelor's degree in 2007. His dedication to public service began shortly thereafter, when he joined the Moline Fire Department in September of 2008, where he served as a firefighter, paramedic until 2021, when he was appointed to the rank of engineer, and today, we celebrate his advancement to lieutenant. Joining Brandon this evening are his fiancee Wendy and their children, Sophia, Wyatt, Jax, Addison, Natalie, and Ezra. Also present to share in this proud moment are his mother and brother, who have supported him instrumentally throughout his career.
Wonderful. Raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I, Brandon Tomlin.
I, Brandon Tomlin.
Having been duly promoted.
Having been duly promoted.
To the rank of lieutenant.
To the rank of lieutenant.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere.
And will strictly adhere.
To the laws of the State of Illinois.
To the laws of the State of Illinois.
And the city of Moline.
And the city of Moline.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of lieutenant of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Of lieutenant of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
No waiting, okay.
Yes.
All right, is everyone here?
Yeah.
All right. Next, we have the Oath of Office for Appointment of Training Officer Jerry Sodos to Deputy Chief of EMS, effective January 13th, 2025.
Again, thank you, Your Honor. It's also my privilege tonight to introduce Jerry Sodos as the department's new Deputy Chief of EMS. Jerry brings nearly 30 years of dedicated service and an exceptional record of leadership to this role. Jerry began his career as a paramedic in 1995 and served the Rock Island Fire Department for a short period of time before joining the Moline Fire Department in May of 2000. Since then, he's continually advanced through the ranks, being appointed to engineer in 2011 and promoted to lieutenant in 2022. Shortly after his promotion to lieutenant, Jerry was selected to lead the department's training division, which he has transformed into a highly respected program across the quad cities' fire service. Beyond his work with the department, Jerry has an impressive history of contributions to EMS and fire service education. He served as a paramedic instructor for Scott Community College for nearly a decade, worked as a shift EMS coordinator, and was an active member of the Moline Police Department's tactical EMS team for the Crisis Containment Unit, also known as SWAT. During his time as a tactical paramedic, Jerry also served on the ILEAS Weapons of Mass Destruction Team. Recently, Jerry achieved another milestone by earning his bachelor's degree in fire administration from Columbia Southern University, further enhancing his knowledge and capabilities as a leader. In addition to running the day-to-day EMS operations of the department, Jerry will also be focused on our ISO program and finding ways that we can work towards improving our current rating. Joining Jerry this evening are his wife of 25 years, Natasha, and their three daughters, Madeline, Allison, and Kristen, who have supported him throughout his remarkable career.
Thank you so much for your impressive leadership. This is for you. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jerry Sodos.
I, Jerry Sodos.
Having been duly promoted.
Having been duly promoted.
To the rank of Deputy Chief of the EMS Division.
To the rank of Deputy Chief of the EMS Division.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere to the laws of the State of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere to the laws of the State of Illinois.
And the city of Moline.
And the city of Moline.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Deputy Chief of the EMS Division.
Of Deputy Chief of the EMS Division.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I'd like to invite the wife, Natasha, up to pin his badge on it.
Chris?
I guess I'm into freelancing now.
Congratulations, Jerry.
Okay, thank you very much, chiefs. We move to our board appointments. These are for the Special Service Area 5, and just to remind the council, these are appointees recommended by the businesses in that special service area, confirmed through Kirk Marskey, and then me to you, okay? So we have the mayor's reappointment of Silas Inskeep to the Special Service Area 5 Board for a two-year term to expire January 1, 2027. The mayor's reappointment of John Miller to the Special Service Area 5 Board for a two-year term to expire January 1, 2027. The mayor's reappointment of Diana Halbend Stricker to the Special Service Area 5 Board for a two-year term to expire January 1, 2027. And the mayor's reappointment of Mike Wannecamp to the Special Service Area 5 Board for a two-year term to expire January 1, 2027. That concludes board appointments. Next, we have our proclamations for today. We start with an annual tradition. Maggie Tinsman, the Honorable Maggie Tinsman is here. Would you like to say any words this year? This is item 6.1, a proclamation from the Iowa Network Against Human Trafficking and Breaking Traffic to declare January 2025 as Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month.
Yes, thank you very much. I do extend my sincere appreciation to all of you from Moline for your instrumental, instrumental role in advancing the passage of the proclamation designating January as Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Your unwavering dedication to address this scourge of human trafficking is not only commendable, but also deeply inspiring. Your efforts bring to the forefront the urgent need for awareness, advocacy, and action, creating a profound ripple event that positively impacts lives and communities. As the initiator behind Iowa's pioneering legislation, which elevated human trafficking to a felony, I understand the significance of such landmark achievements. It is with immense pride that I also serve as the Secretary of Iowa's Network Against Human Trafficking, where we work relentlessly to ensure that this critical issue remains at the forefront of our collective consciousness. Moreover, as the founder of Breaking Traffic, now seamlessly integrated with Family Resources, which also serves you, my commitment to justice and advocacy is continually fueled by individuals like you, whose leadership paves the way for transformative change. Thank you once again for your visionary leadership, tireless dedication, and steadfast pursuit of justice. Your work is truly creating a safer, more just world, and your impact reverberates far beyond the legislation itself. You are making your community a beacon of hope, where those affected by this heinous crime can find the support, healing, and justice they deserve. Your legacy is one of empowerment, compassion, and a brighter future for all. And as a former Molineer, having graduated from Moline High School, I sincerely thank you for this proclamation.
Thank you so much, and we are proud to be able to support your work by supporting our chief and his staff. And as you heard today, we're at full staff, so glad to be able to help.
That's super, yeah, that's great. Thank you very much.
So the proclamation reads, whereas the United States was founded upon the principle that all people are created with the inalienable right to freedom, and added the 13th Amendment to the Constitution, making slavery illegal, and whereas slavery within the United States today is most often found in the form of forced labor and sex trafficking, which weakens our social fabric, increases violence and organized crime, and debases our humanity, and whereas this heinous crime is found within our own community, and whereas even though awareness of this crime is growing, human trafficking continues to go unreported due to its isolating nature, the misunderstanding of its definition, and the lack of awareness about its indicators, and whereas increased community education on how to identify victims of human trafficking, along with increased knowledge of local resources and services for those affected by these criminal actions, can help restore freedom and dignity to identified survivors, as well as help diminish the number of future victims. And whereas every business, community organization, faith community, family, and individual can make a difference by choosing products that are not made by forced labor, by working to protect our young people from sexual exploitation, by addressing the problem of internet sex trafficking and pornography, and by becoming more aware of the problem and possible solutions. And now, therefore, I, Mayor Sangitha Raiapati, do hereby proclaim the month of January 2025 as Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention and Awareness Month, and encourage all our citizens to become more informed on this growing problem, to be vigilant and report suspicious activity, and to work towards solutions to end trafficking in all its forms in our community. If you see something that doesn't look right, take action and call the National Human Trafficking Hotline at 888-373-7888. Thank you so much.
Thank you all again.
Is Chief Galt still here? Nope. Deputy Chief Raiapati. This is for you. Yes, sure. Do you have anything you want to add before I read our proclamation number two? A proclamation to declare January 9, 2025, as National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. Okay. Well, it's certainly wonderful to be able to make this proclamation on an evening where we have celebrated so many things related to our law enforcement in the city of Moline, so thank you to you and your staff. Proclamation reads, whereas the Congress of President and President of the United States have designated January 9, 2025, as National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and whereas each day, more than 1 million police officers across our country put a badge on and go to work knowing they may face extremely dangerous situations, with 139 officers giving their lives in the line of duty last year, a seven decrease, 7% decrease compared to the previous year, and whereas the men and women of the Moline Police Department make difficult decisions every day to safeguard the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Moline and provide a vital public service, now, therefore, I, Sangitha Raiapati, Mayor of Moline, do hereby call upon all citizens of Moline and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe January 9, 2025, as National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day.
Thank you, and I do want to add, thank you for your support, thank you for the community support, thank you to our staff that worked, that worked the street for us and to keep our community safe, but generally, it takes all of us collectively together to help people and make a better place, and I think we're doing that here, and thank you to you guys.
So we're at number seven, public comment. Is there a public comment? Deputy Chief Raiapati. Okay. Welcome back, Joyce.
And you know the rules about three minutes?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I wrote it, so we go.
No problem.
Timed it. Dear Mayor Raiapati and council members, I am here to ask you to allow seniors at the Moline Activity Center the ability to park for short activity periods in the parking lot that adjoins our senior center at 620 18th Street, Moline, with the new Parks and Recreation Department that is taking over the old Bethany Children's and Family Building at 1836th Avenue, Moline, the parking lots right next to our senior center. The staff of the township building, which houses the Moline Activity Center for seniors, park off-site and walk across 18th Street to their offices. This allows the entire front of the center for seniors. This is about 10 parking spaces. On Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, we have an exercise class adapted for seniors that helps us to stay as mobile as possible as we age. Oftentimes, about 30 persons participate from 9:30 till 10:15 a.m. The woman who leads the class is 90 years old herself. Since the Parks Department parking lot was empty during the transition, elders had been used to running in for this activity, which has a handicapped accessible entrance to the building. The area was safe, cleared of snow, salted. The other option would be to cross 7th Avenue, which, while parking at the Masonic Temple, I think it's called the Spotlight Theater now, elders are concerned since there's a roundabout plan to be installed, and elders are not welcome to park there anyway. One woman deceased now used to walk bent over with a cane, with a little can of salt, spread it in front of her as she crossed 7th Avenue. Another couple still active, both retired educators in Moline School District, come in together with the wife, leading her Alzheimer-affected husband by the hand. One gentleman hasn't had a stroke that leaves one side affected, but he wants to stay active. There are several with hip replacements and several with knee replacements that struggle. Many use canes and some even walkers. Many use chairs for their exercises as they are not confidently stable and are afraid of a fall. A fall is devastating to seniors with weak bones and muscles. Although all other activities, bingo cards, pool, ping pong, all of Wednesday, noon lunch, et cetera, et cetera, are important socially, the exercising helps them stay as mobile as possible for as long as they can to stay independent. Many of these folks are on fixed incomes and cannot afford tickets and are law-abiding citizens. They are only asking for your gracious forbearance by sharing your parking area close to the Moline Activity Center on their exercise class mornings, Monday. Moline Activity Center on their exercise class mornings, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, for approximately 45 minutes without warnings or tickets. In fact, a welcome would be wonderful. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Any questions on our agenda? Okay, we'll move to our items of business on the Committee of the Whole, number 9.1, a resolution designating the city of Moline, Illinois to be a B-City USA affiliate. Do we have Eric or...
Kelly Nachy.
Yay, nice to meet you in person.
Hi, everybody. My name's Kelly Nachy. I am a Moline resident and a member of the Moline Pollinator Preservation Committee. Today, we're talking about B-City USA, which is a program put on by the Xerces Society. They're a nonprofit organization that's dedicated to the conservation of invertebrates. B-City USA is a program that they put on where communities can take part, and it's centered on the preservation of specifically native pollinators. So I believe there was a clicker maybe, or...
Is there a clicker? Is it underneath?
Oh.
Sorry.
There we go.
The worn-out button.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tumian. Thank you.
There we go.
Okay.
So just a brief overview. We're going to start with pretty much what it is, which I kind of already explained. Several benefits of becoming an affiliate. I won't read them all to you, but there they are. Generally, the heart of it is ecological, environmental. These are all things that the city of Moline is already working towards in their city There are some requirements to be a B-City affiliate. Many of these will be managed by the committee that is managing the B-City designation. Also, Dawn and Dick are here with me tonight. They're also in the committee. Yep. So a lot of these requirements we've already been working on, or the city of Moline has already adopted, like the IPM, which is an Integrated Pest Management Plan. That's something already being put in place by the city, and that's one of the main requirements of the designation. The other ones are a little more simple, displaying signage, having a web presence. These are things that the committee will directly manage and maintain. The initial application is what we will be submitting after the city approves this resolution. After that, every year, we are to apply for renewal. Basically, we just have to write a report and submit it to the Xerces Society, explaining what we've done that year and how we're meeting our requirements. People involved in this are going to be pretty much everybody in the city, residents, city staff, volunteers. A lot of the hands-on work is going to be done by the committee and by volunteers. In the slide, there's a picture of Wild Ones, which is our local chapter of an organization. Dick is a member of Wild Ones. They're already working on a lot of these native pollinator programs and projects throughout the city, so they'll be helping us a lot for a lot of these. And we're hoping to recruit a couple of them for our committee, too. Other than that, residents can take part by... Sorry. By working in their own yards to reduce pesticide usage, to plant more native plantings, and conserve nesting sites for the pollinators. We also have, I should have said, we also have a liaison who's in the part, Eric. He is the Parks and Recreation Director. He'll be liaison between the committee and the city staff. So we'll always have somebody there who is working directly in both. The timeline begins today, pretty much. In fact, some of it's already begun, like I said, with the IPM. After we submit our application to the Xerces Society and that is approved by them, the committee will start working on things like our website, the native pollinator plants and plant supplier list, things like that, that we have to kind of check off the list. After that, it's really just a matter of maintaining those goals and maintaining those requirements throughout the years. The IPM will be tracked over several years. There's already milestones written into that plan that the city is going to be keeping an eye on. And then ongoing, we just have to reapply every year for renewal. And then some questions that we've already faced by people we've presented this to. The main one that we keep coming up with is, does this mean we can't use pesticides? Because one of the goals of B-City USA is to reduce pesticide use, both privately and publicly. The short answer is no. We don't have to stop using pesticides altogether. The goal is reduction of pesticide use, and where it's still necessary, we will still have to use pesticides. But if we're working towards reducing that and exploring other more non-toxic options where it's possible, then that really fulfills that requirement. And again, the IPM plan is centered around reduction of pesticide use as well. The other question we've come across a few times is, how will it impact the city budget? Will it cost the taxpayers money? The only taxpayers it will cost money are people who choose to donate to the effort. We won't be implementing any kind of fee or tax or anything. The $300 application fee has already been pledged by the city. Other than that, most of our efforts will be fundraisers, donations. As we go through the first year, we'll kind of monitor what the realistic budget is for this initiative, and if we need to come to the city for the following year for renewal, then we can do it then. The last question I have on there is, who's on the committee? What will they do? And I've kind of already covered that. So far, it's just three of us and then Bob. I'm sorry, not Bob, Eric. And Bob has been helping too, though, a little bit in the effort. Dawn Temple works for the city. Dick Potter is a former alderman, and he's a master gardener. He's also a member of the Wild Ones. And then I am just a resident of Moline. I am an accountant by trade, but I'm also an amateur gardener, and I just really care about pollinators. So that's kind of who we are and what we're about and why we're doing this.
Great. Okay. Thank you for that explanation.
Thank you.
Can we get a motion on this?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Anna. This is kind of a struggle. Discussion. I'm like overjoyed, Ms. Nachy, because when you first wrote to me and started talking about it, it was clear it was a passion project of yours. I'm so glad to see people have gotten on board. We got some energy moving now on it. And it's sort of like now in a beautiful basket that's beginning to fill with residents who are moving ideas forward. So Mr. Thanksgiving being resurrected was one of those, and you as well, doing this alongside Mr. Potter and Dawn, et cetera. Actually, that whole committee is Moline residents.
Yes, that's true.
That's wonderful. So I'm excited personally to see you take off with this and see where it goes. Yes, Mr. Macias.
Thank you. In regards to, is this like an affiliate program?
Yes.
Right? Okay. Do they offer like educational...
Yes. They offer quite a few resources for their affiliates. There are webinars, training seminars, other web-based resources. They have a lot of packets they can send us. They send us a PR packet when we've been approved. And they also design signage for the city. They'll send it as a file, and then we just have a local sign maker make it. But they put the city of Moline on there and everything for us.
We have an in-house sign maker.
Oh, perfect.
Just... And I was, is there other comment, questions? Yes, Mr. McNeil.
So thank you, Kelly, and to the committee. I'm also an amateur gardener.
Okay.
And a member of Wild Ones. And I think this is fantastic, and I hope that as a council and staff, that we can also keep our eye on the power of native plants in other ways, like, right? Stormwater management. You have a lot of cities that, in parks where, you know, there's areas that are not used for recreation or programming, they leave no mow and plant native seeds. But I think there are many opportunities beyond this, but starting with education, I'm glad that Eric's on the committee. I would hope that maybe somebody from Public Works as well would...
We'll work on that.
Be encouraged. So, but thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to also add, we need to make sure as a staff that Ashley is kept up to date on all things. She's our community engagement coordinator, so she can help get the word out on all your events and all that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Yes, Mr. McNeil and Mr. Macias.
So, yeah, so does Wild Ones write grants locally as well to...
I don't know if I can answer that question. I know they're involved in a number of different projects.
Just thinking about...
I'm sure that picture up there is right next to...
And that's fantastic. That's in my board.
The... It's in your board. Down there on 41st Street, off Fourth Avenue.
Yes. And if you haven't been by, it is, and it's third year, maybe?
Yeah, it's amazing.
Yeah, so... But I just wondered if there are opportunities for projects like that by writing grants through Wild Ones.
There are. I mean, we, in 2023 or '22, the city did help a Wild Ones plot next to the community garden in the Florissantine neighborhood. So there is that right off of the one-way, right there on the right-hand side. That's an additional project that has happened.
Okay.
At least it got started last year, I believe.
And the John Deere site. Of the city of John Deere has also been...
Yep. So we're on the move.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Macias.
Yes, and do you envision this group also maybe going to some neighborhood meetings and educating some of our more active neighborhoods?
I know. I live in the Wheelock, Beale neighborhood, and we kind of get together a few times a year. So I was hoping the next time we all get together, I'd be able to tell them about B-City, maybe try to get some local interest going with, you know, among the residents, and start building those corridors of uninterrupted pollinator habitat.
We need you, their committee, to get connected to the Moline Community Development Corporation. They all have, the board is made up of representatives from different neighborhood groups, or KJ's Moline Neighbors United go and present to them. Well, one of their Tuesday meetings, Thursday meetings, I can't remember.
Thursday.
Thursday morning.
Okay.
So that'll be important. Those are important members who'll get to help get the word out.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Tumian.
Mine, I also suggest, and this is down the ways a little bit, but I'm working with the elementary schools. A lot of this stuff is educational, and it requires years and years and years of exposure. And I think as we think about the next generation of Molineers, we start them now understanding the value of this, so it doesn't go away. And if there's an educational component, possible real-life interaction with some of these gardens and native plants and everything, I think would be a real benefit to the city so that a future council doesn't do away with this. It's just part of who we are, you know?
Thank you. All right, if there's nothing further, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
9.2, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an economic development and business growth partnership agreement between Grow Quad Cities and the Quad Cities region. Very...
Yep. Don't believe we have anyone here specifically to talk to, correct? So the Grow Quad Cities is an economic development initiative created by leadership of the Quad Cities Chamber. And the goal of it is to enhance economic development activities through the Illinois counties of Henry, Mercer, and Rock Island, as well as the Iowa counties of Clinton, Muscatine, and Scott. Grow Quad Cities is intended to provide services focused on marketing, lead generation, prospect management, and business growth. It's intended to complement but be distinct from other local development efforts. The agreement contemplates a per capita contribution from the city of $1.69 per capita, which is just under $72,000 in year one. And then in subsequent years, the amount goes up 20 cents per capita.
Yes. Thank you so much. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All right. Discussion. Oops, sorry, that was Ms. Nachy and Tumian. Discussion, Mr. Macias.
As a board member of the Quad Cities Chamber, which was also part of Grow, I'm going to recuse myself from this.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
The commitment being requested from Grow Quad Cities is a replacement for the economic development agreement we've had in place with the chamber. That's, I guess that has been my understanding. Are we sure of that?
I don't think so. But Mr. McNeil.
My understanding is that this is the same annual allocation to the chamber, but now it's in two buckets. Is that right? It's, we have an allocation to the chamber, and now this new nonprofit, which is similar to what we've allocated in the past.
Yes. It is. Every other city is, I think we are one of the last cities to come on board to get it on our agenda and pass it. But this is what they've been talking with us about for months. And I believe we talked about it in September when we had requests from agencies, and they went into our budget. So we've already, in some senses, allocated that. I am foggy on whether it's two or one. So unfortunately, Bob is our, has that full-on answer. This is the Committee of the Whole item. It's going to go on to the meeting in two weeks. We could make sure we have that answer by then as well, if that's satisfactory to you. Or you can vote.
We certainly need the answer.
Yes.
Your Honor, while he can vote, I believe Mr. Macias can shed light on...
Yeah. So basically, the Quad Cities Chamber already was providing the services for the area. It was just under the umbrella of the Quad Cities Chamber, but now the services of economic development, it's its own entity. So it's two separate organizations on paper. So it's not just one. As far as the ask, really, for us, that's where the benefit is. So for cities. So that's why they're asking it.
But are they going to ask us for money twice? And my understanding is they were not. I just wanted to make sure that this is all of our understanding.
No, no, no.
But my understanding was that our annual allocation has not changed the chamber, but it's being divided to the chamber and Grow. That's the way I understood it at budget time. We asked that question.
And if I can, because we're a public entity, we're not a business. The business sides, they would probably contribute either donations here, but also do chamber activities. We're not doing that.
Yes, they've clarified the tasks of both sides based on that money donation. Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
That is in alignment with how they answered when they were here prior, with every time I've asked this question, and every time this comes up, I will ask the same question. Because I think it's very important that we look at this as saying, from our perspective, we are not receiving additional services, so not interested in pushing forward additional And doing both, and paying for that twice. The other piece to this puzzle, and I think it is something that we will have to have some patience with, but I think is important to focus on, is ensuring that as Grow Quad Cities develops, it expands the types of business and the types of services, and that are better suited to meet all needs of all the cities in the Quad Cities. We had heard over the past year that the chamber was working on reallocating or realigning what we were working on, moving away from having only shovel-ready large-scale sites, which is something that, with very few exceptions, Moline will just not be capable of providing. And that they'd been talking about diversifying the types of areas, the types of industry, not just looking into manufacturing, but into a larger scope of what they were going to do. Was a little disappointed when the list of their initial focus area came out, and it was the exact same things that it has always been. I have made this clear to the chamber that I was a little disappointed, but also that I understand as we're growing in this, it may take some time to make that pivot, and that at least the fact that they are talking about making those resolutions makes me hopeful that we will get to a place that's happening. I just think it's very important, too, for us to be mindful of that. And as the second part of this, I will all harp on every time we talk about it. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Well, yeah, I will say, even though there is this funding arrangement that's illustrated in the explanation page, the resolution itself does not talk about any contributions. And I'll just also point out that there is an out clause in writing. You can, the city can get out of this with 120-day notice.
Thank you. All right, if there's nothing further, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. 9.3, an ordinance amending Chapter 3 signs and advertising of the Moline Code of Ordinances regarding certain corrections and/or clarifications to the sign regulation... regarding certain corrections and/or clarifications to the sign regulations, including text amendments to various sections in Article Two, Signs, and amending Chapter Thirty-five, Zoning and Land Development, of the Moline Code of Ordinances regarding certain corrections and/or clarifications to the zoning and land development regulations, including text amendments to Article One, General Provisions and Administration, Article Two, Development Review and Procedures, Article Three, Zoning, and Article Five, Site Improvement and Performance Standards.
Okay, so I apologize that this looks more, it's more intimidating than it actually is. What we're doing here is an annual review of our zoning code of Chapter Thirty-five and Chapter Three, codes that we use to regulate development. So I'm not gonna go through this entire ordinance unless you want me to. I'll do kind of a three-minute overview of the main, the big things. And then we can certainly go back to any page, and we can answer any questions for you. But a lot of the stuff that's in here is either a typo, or we have inconsistency in the code where we just wanna make sure things match up. But we will talk about some of the other changes that we are pushing for, since it's a chance for us to update our code. So the, the last thing I'll point out too would be sometimes one code change may take place in two different chapters. So when you're actually looking at an ordinance, you may see something at the beginning and something at the end that really pretends, pertains to the same amendment that we're trying to, to make here. So the first one that you'll see come up is in, in a change to the sign code. And it is also gonna include a change to our brightness standards. And this is to deal with, the intent here from staff and from Plan Commission was to regulate bright lights that you'll see around vape shops around town. You'll see these very bright window lights. And so Ansel Glink provided some language for us where we would actually make a change to our sign code. You can see here on page three, signs that do not conform to the illumination standards. And as we get later on in the ordinance, you'll see what that actual change is. But it's a way that we can regulate those, those bright string lights that are on the front of buildings. And the initial question I had, of course, was, well, can we go after the, can we, can we respond to those that are out there already? Or are we only dealing with new instances of this? And Dan Boland's first indication was he thinks that each one of these is a separate instance, and that we could probably go after the, the existing bright lights that we have out there. So more to come. If you choose to pass it, more to come on that. We're changing a banner to match up with the temporary sign language. So we were proposing to change that from a sixty-day to an a hundred and eighty-day limitation on banners. And that's just to ma- match those up. Right now, no one in the city of Moline can have a recreational vehicle on their residential lot that's taller than six feet. We're not proposing to change that. But what is in the code right now is you actually have to meet the setbacks of a house for your boat that you're storing in your backyard. It's gotta be like thirty feet off the rear property line. So we're proposing to change that, where you can actually have it like a garage, five feet off the alley, just some more flexibility there. On page five, you'll see some non-conforming lot regulations. This is a good one, I think, in line with what the Plan Commission and the council are wanting to do as far as opening up non-conforming lots for more development. You can see it's a simple change, changing the word and to or. That will allow us to look at minimum lot width and minimum lot area in terms of if we can make something happen on a lot. So it doesn't have to meet both those anymore. It can only meet one. That's an inconsistency in the code, or you could even call that a typo, but we just wanna make sure that's clear as we pursue this. Page six and seven, these are things that were removed from, these are, these were removed from a table. And we believe it was an error by the company that puts this code online. So we just wanted to make sure that these, four years ago, these were accidentally removed by that company, and we just wanna make sure those are in there. So that's what you're seeing on page seven and eight. On page nine and ten, we've added, we wanna clarify that all dumpsters, when they are constructed, must have a six-foot fence around them regardless of where they are.
Mr. Mathias, you're referring to not the temporary ones that people rent for a particular project?
Yeah, this would be a permanent dumpster for any kind of commercial business or multifamily residential. We have added, let's see, what do we have here? Sales and service and vehicle. We had, we had an instance where a drive-through for Starbucks was, had to be twenty-five feet away from a property line, so we're fixing that. Drive-throughs need, they need to fit in some spaces. We can't have twenty-five feet away from a sign property line for a drive-through. So that was another connection that was done there. On page thirteen, you'll see some corrections we're making. We have an illegal tow operation in the neighborhood right now. And we wanna, we wanna clarify what, where we fit in a towing operation, whether it has a salvage yard or whether it doesn't have a salvage yard. Okay. And I wanna skip ahead really to a couple of the main ones here. Off-street parking requirements, there's been, we've had a lot of throat length issues. And what the throat length is, especially in areas like Avenue of the Cities, parking is required to be a certain distance from that road. And so we're adding some flexibility to be able to deal with those, so we don't have to have a variance all the time. We're lowering residential parking requirements from three spots per unit down to two spots per unit. That's consistent with all the other cities around us. I know that there's still a desire from some folks to maybe go further, but we at least knew we wanted to do this, and that we can still continue to talk about that question as we move forward. We're also requiring less parking for office, professional service, retail, and intensive retail. As you can see, it goes on page seventeen from one per three-hundred to one per four-hundred-and-fifty square feet. And the last one that I, I'm, was a big deal for me, that I really, I'm glad this is included here, and we hope we have your support on, is to add more exterior materials in commercial areas. We get a lot of nice designs from prominent architects in the Quad Cities at least that have metal on buildings. And so we've, you can see here on page twenty, and then going into twenty-one where the actual changes are, we are proposing to allow structural steel or aluminum. Excuse me, we already have structural steel, aluminum, or glass in there. Those get renumbered. What we're adding would be architectural metal wall panels, up to thirty-five percent of the front facade. And then we would also add engineered wood, finished corrugated metal. And that would be finished corrugated metal, right? Couldn't be unfinished. And then we're also clarifying below that that vinyl, aluminum, and steel siding are prohibited, as they always have been, but we're just making that very clear in the code, so. Any other, any questions for anybody on this? I know it's a lot to go through, and I'm kinda flying through it.
Well, let's do that after we get it on the floor for discussion. Thank you for the explanation. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Timian, seconded by Messias. Discussion. Mr. Messias, you had a question?
Thank you. I, I know we had talked about a, a business owner who was trying to put that metal stuff. So is that similar to other cities, or like the thirty-five percent?
The thirty-five percent is similar to our form-based code, is where I borrowed that language from.
Okay.
You know, I think you could even consider going a little more and saying maybe half, the top, top half of the building or whatever. But to ease it in there, we put thirty-five percent as kind of a top third of the building to use it. So we, our, our thinking was too, if we had, you know, we could always do kind of a variance or something beyond that if we're easing in. But, but yeah, there was a business on Fifteenth Street where we had this come up.
And I know, well, part of the frustration is they weren't, like, they didn't give guidance on some of those things. What, what is that experience like if they're present the plan, and you see, say, fifty percent of this type of material on the outside? Before they buy the materials?
Right, ideally, you're talking with them before they buy the materials. In that case, he had already bought, bought things. But, um, you know, that, that is thing, those are things we talk about in like a pre, what we call pre-development meeting. Basically, you try and get the various departments in there and, and talk about those various issues. You try and catch that as soon as you can, right?
Yeah, yeah, okay. And, and, and just one final, and so basically, the way, just because of that example, it just seemed, the experience, the feedback was, well, I wasn't told this, and then we had to change the cost of time, money, all this other stuff. But it, it sounds like, you know, because you were just back, that we're actually working with them a lot more preemptively, right, with these things?
Yeah, and I think it just, you know, it's kind of like, I guess there's a libertarian, a little bit mindset there with it. It's like if I've got architects that are coming out saying, this is good design, you know, that's why it's presented to you. That's where I guess should be things we're allowing people to do, especially if we have architects saying that we should do it. It seems just kind of arbitrary to say, no, you know, we just don't allow this at all, you know? So I prefer to get back, I, I wish we could just kind of say, hey, look, what does an architect think? But we gotta, we have to put some arbitrary things in there, and I think this is a good way to go about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Timian?
I, I do have a few amendments, but I'd like to ask a question first. I was helping a resident with a church remodel, and I know you were involved in that email chain. Did these new materials kind of remedy that particular one? I think he was in a residential neighborhood, and it was where the front of the building couldn't be vinyl, but all the
Yeah.
side could. There was some weird stuff around that.
Right.
And I don't really remember the specifics.
We found a solution in that case, but I don't, it's not gonna, you know, it's not gonna solve every, it's not gonna solve everything, I guess. You know, and that's, so you're kind of looking at things where, okay, where are we comfortable where, okay, if it's beyond this, we have a variance process, and we can kind of talk about the exceptions beyond that. But I would say still for churches and commercial areas, it's, it's gonna be a little difficult when it comes to vinyl siding, and I'm not sure we wanna open that up fully either.
And, and I think just adding more materials, I was, I was surprised by how restrictive it was previously, and it felt very dated. So I'm glad that we're just accepting that, you know, buildings, and, and vinyl siding isn't what it used to be. And, and I think like a lot of different materials are a lot more modern-looking than they were twenty years ago, so.
And I don't think it'll be the last time we amend this, right? I think this is like kind of your first step, is try and free it up a little bit.
Thank you. Other questions? Comments? Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, and this just occurred when we were discussing that. When we are not allowing certain materials, what are the primary reasons of not allowing them? Is it aesthetic, or is it safety? Is it, I'm guessing there's a mixture of all of them.
Yeah, I think with, with vinyl siding, for example, I think it's aesthetic because it kind of has a residential use. It's also a cheaper material. It doesn't hold up very well. And you can notice that when you go through, through certain smaller towns, right? If you go through a smaller town, you kind of notice, oh, hey, they're allowing a metal building right here, because they just don't have those type of standards, right? So you have these so that you can have a higher, higher level of aesthetic, a higher level of cohesiveness. We, of course, are not, you know, we only, we only have the form-based code in one section of our town, right? So there's very lo- levels of control that you can go to, and I think you're always trying to find that middle, that balanced area. But did you have a specific question that I, did I?
Yeah, I'd answered the question. Are there any that we're outlawing for safety reasons? Like, is there, or is it primarily aesthetic?
When it comes down to safety, that would usually be where the building official will get together and say, look, we've gotta shut this down, put barricades up, and so usually that's more like if we're worried about it falling or something. Now, I would say it's usually aesthetics and just like, why wouldn't you want plywood on the front of a building? Or why wouldn't you want really cheap corrugated metal or something? It's usually just aesthetics.
Thank you. Mr. Timian?
I would like to make a motion to amend Table Thirty-five dash fifty-one hundred point three, titled Minimum Required Parking Spaces for Residential Land Uses, Manufactured Home, and Mobile Home/Mobile Home Park, to two per unit. And this is on page sixteen of the council bill, and page eight, I believe, of the ordinance explanation. If you're following along.
I'm sorry, could you say those, the land uses again, just so I can mark it?
Manufactured home and mobile home slash mobile home park to two per unit. And with a second, I can.
Settle.
So, Your Honor, if I may.
Yes, that was motioned and seconded. That was Timian and Schmidt.
The idea here is if we are reducing minimum parking from three to two for single detached homes, we should probably match for mobile homes as well. I can't imagine a use case where a mobile home, or a manufactured home, would require more parking than a five-bedroom house.
Thank you.
Yeah, staff wouldn't have any issues with that. Just to clarify, the exact text would be similar to up above. It would just, we could cross out everything here and just put two per unit, and I wouldn't have any problem with that.
Two, two per unit, that's what I have written now. Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of this amendment as stated?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So we're back to the motion as amended. Yes, Mr. Timian?
Your Honor, I would like to amend Table Thirty-five dash fifty-one hundred point three, Minimum Required Parking Spaces, and remove all parking minimums for commercial land use.
And do you have the page number?
That's the same page.
Commercial, I see as page seventeen, starting at the bottom of seventeen.
That was correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McNeil. Discussion. Mr. Timian?
So, Your Honor, the, the idea here is that, and I appreciate staffs making these more, more liberal in terms of reducing the number of spots for commercial land use. As we have witnessed, and, and not just in Moline, but other cities, the requirement for parking oftentimes is prohibitive for a lot of new businesses to form. When we think about Walmart, South Park Mall, Target, all these big box stores, they are mostly empty all year round. And these businesses did not build massive parking lots because they wanted to. They built them because they had to. And so I firmly believe that a commercial enterprise will not build more than they need. And any, anything beyond that is nothing more than an unfunded mandate. It does create a, a, a higher cost to do business in the city. But I'm also extremely concerned about businesses going into existing buildings. And based on their business type, would not be allowed to operate if it is a smaller building without adequate parking. You think about a neighborhood store, you think about anything like that. They would not be allowed to do business there because they don't have required parking. Further reduction or removal of parking minimums is something that has taken place across the country and is, you know, happening. So, and I've been a very vocal advocate for it, so I figured for commercial, this would be a good opportunity to at least have the discussion and see where we can go from there.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Mathias?
Just one thing I would add, I don't disagree with much of what Alden and Timian is saying. The only thing I would say is we do have an exemption for a change of use in a building. So if I buy a building on Avenue of the Cities, I wanna, I have a legal use, I'm going in there, I won't have to upgrade my parking. We don't look at the number that they need, but if they're building it new, correct, they would need to meet those standards, so.
Mr. Schmidt?
I am generally supportive of the need to reduce our parking minimums. And I think much of the reasons presented in, in business cases in particular, those people who are building those buildings will generally look to make sure it is, is, there is adequate parking in the area. I, however, would not support a blanket removal for all of the commercial. I just think that's too fast and too far, because I think we need to approach that more. I mean, perhaps in the retail spaces or some of these things. When you think about like an entertainment venue piece, right? With, if someone just plopped it down and said, well, there's plenty of parking in this neighborhood, but then now we have to have all those cars that go into the neighborhood instead of going into a parking lot. I just, I am not, I don't feel I have enough information in front of me to feel comfortable making that sweeping of a change at this time.
Mr. Messias, I mean, Razak, sorry.
I do agree with Mr. Smith, and I'm not opposing, but I think it is too early to make a decision like that, because we do not have any study result or anything in, in our hand that we can, we can be very decisive about it. So I, I think there should be some restriction. We cannot just leave everything.
Thank you. Mr. Timian?
I, I appreciate, you know, the, wanting to make data-driven decisions. And I think it's important that if we look at historically, the source for parking minimums, whether it's residential or commercial, they have never been data-driven. In all the country, not just Moline, they have just been arbitrary or copied from one community to the next without any rhyme or reason. Why is there one spot per thousand square foot in a animal boarding service? Why, why one? You know, what is the basis for this? And when we remove them completely, what we do is lower the bar for doing business in the city, and we let the business owner take the risk. If they wanna open a, a, a venue that doesn't have parking, and as a result, they don't get business, that should be their risk to take. It shouldn't be the city to say, you can't do business here because you don't have enough parking. And, and that's really the, the fundamental thing we're talking about. And we can wait forever to get the right studies that back up the way that we already feel. And we will effectively be letting our inaction appear to be prudence, when really it is just being overly careful or cautious. And I think that we get the opportunity to make a, a real sweeping change that tells business owners that we want to welcome them in instead of increasing barriers for, for doing business here.
Thank you. Well, there's Mr. McNeil?
Yeah, and, and I am supportive, and for what Alder Person Schmidt and Timian both said, that I think that businesses are going to plan appropriately for parking, and if they don't. And if they don't, I agree that that is their risk. Perhaps we have businesses that don't plan for enough parking and there will be folks parking on streets. But I guess I would need a more compelling case than, you know, we don't want people parking on streets. To me, that's similar to discussions around, you know, paying for parking downtown. I just think that's part of city life and deciding what we want to be as a city, so I am supportive.
Other comments, Mr. Messias?
What could be some unintended consequences? Could it be some businesses that, let's say, really grow and hire a lot of people? Next thing you know, they are sprawling into the neighborhoods or?
Yeah, this this, I mean, this was on the Plan Commission work plan for this to where we had like five issues we wanted to talk about. We did get to this one of reducing parking minimums. It's where a couple of these come out of that discussion, right? But it the discussion went like this, very similar to this at Plan Commission, I would say. You know, with people kind of on that side and then realizing like, oh, wait, well, what if they just all park in the neighborhoods or, you know? But it's really, really how it went at Plan Commission, I'd say.
And what was the vote to go to to reducing minimums?
I think ultimately what you see here is the result of the co- I don't think it went the next meeting or whatever to say, okay, let's go with it. But this is, you know, this is the culmination of that. It's kind of like everybody saying, are we, are we sure we want to do this?
I understand that I meant the numbers. Was it unanimous from the Plan Commission coming to us?
Yeah, I think I think you maybe have one or two people that are on on that end and the rest kind of saying, maybe we should study this a little bit more. So that that would be one thing that can come out of this too, and I realize it's not what what Alderman Timian wants right now. But it could be kind of like pushing it back to the Plan Commission to study it again and coming back to you with something else more reasoned or maybe look at it some more data. That's another thing you could do there too.
Okay, thank you. So the amendment, yes?
I just had a question. If other cities around us like Davenport, Rock Island, do they have similar minimums or?
I believe they have some amount of parking requirements for commercial.
I'm for lowering it. I mean, I definitely think that we do need to lower it. I'm not wanting to put a blanket zero on it, though.
Mr. Timian?
I just, as a reminder, if we put a blanket zero, it doesn't mean there won't be parking. What it means is that the business owner gets to decide what what type of risk they want to take for parking. And the city, I guess the question is, what is the city's role here? Is the city's job to tell people how much parking they should have with their business? Because that's what we currently do. And it feels like an overstep. If you want to open your ice cream shop and have no parking and rely entirely on foot traffic, that should be your right. Currently, you can't do that. And I think that's a shame. And that's what I'm proposing that we remedy.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
There are no parking restrictions for commercial in the downtown business district?
You could open it downtown or on certain areas of Avenue of the Cities, Uptown or Old Town. You could, you could do an ice cream shop with no parking, but those are the only areas.
Right, and I think, and I, and that certainly is is that right test case, obviously the right place to be. I also think there's not been any major problems in those areas, certainly. I think my concern really does stem from a few of these larger pieces, really lodging in the entertainment areas of being ones in particular that I think are, they raise the biggest flag to me. When you say get rid of all of them, those are the ones I have a hard time getting onto. So as a point of order, given how the motion is made, is there a way for me to make an amendment that would remove them? Can I just make that as a plain spoken amendment?
Well, you could make a motion to amend.
The amendment.
The amendment.
To, and then that would be to to put it to zero for all commercial except and name the ones I'd like to remove.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to amend the motion on the floor to take commercial parking minimums to zero for all categories except lodging, entertainment indoor, entertainment outdoor, and entertainment adult.
I'll second that.
All right, that's motion by Schmidt, seconded by Timian. Discussion? I appreciate the appearance of such a reasonable middle of the road. I I I will just weigh in as mayor just to say, I think we are in an environment where we need to be as flexible as possible within our means to encourage business development. Mr. Schmidt?
And I say some of this in my questions, but I just think those ones raise the biggest red flags. If someone wanted to come in and put up a hotel with no new parking lot and we wouldn't have a way to stop that, that is really a like a red flag concern to me or at least that we would have a variance process on something like that. And the others, when I really think about them, I'm not as concerned. They fall into those what are often smaller businesses and lesser impacts. So I think that's why put forward this changes makes me a lot more comfortable with making this move.
I will, I will put out in sales and service general as like a Walmart or Big Box, just so you know, like just everybody's on the same page. I mean, that's retail, reflective of its size, small, big, right?
I think personally, I think that's a perfect example of of corporations who will absolutely put in what they need, not more than what they need necessarily, if it, you know, to fit their business plan. But, sorry, was there another hand here? And then, Mr. Timian?
Simply that I was, I was gonna say the same thing. That I did understand that and I have less concern in that type of unit, but thank you.
Mr. Timian?
To that point, I believe that the 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 sales, Walmarts, Big Box, they're incentivized to have more parking than they need because they can afford it. And a lot of these smaller businesses that are on the margins, that per space, property tax, stormwater fees, land use, all the different things, that that really impacts their business quite a bit. And I would love for the former Best Buy and that whole shopping center to get rid of some of their, maybe put an outlaw building or just some green space, like there's a lot of opportunities. And I know that that these generally relate to new construction, but I'm certain that there is a use case where now they could put an outlaw that wouldn't require as much parking for different business types. And so I think that as we look at maybe approaching the the mall redevelopment and all sorts of different things that are just big parking lots, this opens up some gateways to do that. As for the hotels, I hope that we're in a situation that this is not a problem. We have new hotels being built and new entertainment venues that require valets. And so we get to revisit that when, you know, the population doubles and, you know, I think that's great. I'm supportive of the amendment.
Thank you. Ms. Castro?
I'm generally supportive of the amendment, but I just, I wonder if rather than, I would like to send it back because I I think rather than making blanket statements, I think there's some things on here, like there's something for like high schools about like there has to be like one per teacher. And, I mean, you're right, they're not going to build a brand-new hi- a brand-new high school without the parking, but they need parking for their students and for their teachers. And I I just, I just feel like just making big blanket ones are kind of hard and would like to see things just looked at a little bit more individually myself. I mean, I'm not against, I'm not, I'm not against lowering it.
I think knowing what the school district's building plan is would make that concern make more sense in my head, which it's it's gonna take a long time for them to do anything for it to matter.
With your amendments that you have on the floor right now, you wouldn't be changing for schools, so you only have the commercial section.
That's correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're, if there's nothing further, all in favor of this motion to remove all of the parking minimums for commercial land use, putting it to zero except for lodging and all of the entertainment categories. That's the amendment to the amendment. This is what we're voting on. Signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Did anyone abstain?
Me, I did.
I did. We have three.
Point of order, Your Honor, there is no mechanism for abstention in the code.
No.
Okay. Benay. I would ask you to please state your vote. Because I didn't ask for an abstention and we don't have that in our code, correct? So, all those in favor of this amendment as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
Nay.
All right, so four ayes, three nays. The amendment to the amendment passes. Correct. So now we are back to discussion about the amendment as amended. And in to- and in total, correct, Ms. Kasopolis? Any further discussion? Yes?
I, I believe Alderperson Castro makes a good point in that a lot of these do require a deeper look and a more of a thought process. But I think that with those removals, ones that concern me, I'm comfortable in this particular zone, though I think, yes, it does need to be revisited on the larger scale. And I think this is something that might actually make a difference. It just feels like that thing that provides some flexibility and some opportunities. So even as we continue to have those conversations, I think taking a step is where I like to be.
Thank you. So now we are voting on the motion on the floor as amended, meaning it includes going to zero for all categories of commercial other than lodging and the entertainment categories. Everyone is clear? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay. Nay.
That also passes. I'm going to also vote this time, as is my prerogative, and I vote aye. So that passes five to three. Okay, thank you so much. We're to our informational ten point one. Oh, sorry, what do I have left to do?
We still have the motion on the floor.
Yes.
Okay, so the motion on the floor.
The resolution itself.
The resolution itself.
Oh, I'm sorry, the ordinance.
The ordinance.
Amendment is amended.
Okay. If there's nothing further, we will vote on the ordinance as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you, I'm sorry. I know. I even have my little thingy dingy still in here. Yes, no, what do we do? Thank you. Informational ten point one, January twenty twenty-five status and information report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Administrator Vitas has provided the December or the January status and information report covering the city's activities in December. And as usual, his cover memo is on the front. A few of the highlights include completion of two bike path sections, Nineteenth Street, Mississippi River Trail, street reconstruction on Thirty-eighth Street, Forty-eighth Street, some state mandated staff training, excuse me, and the library gardens being substantially complete. And they'll be planning an open house in the spring. It'll be exciting to see it in bloom. And traffic signals at Thirty-sixth and Sixteenth and then Thirty-second and Forty-first Street by the library, which is one personally I've heard a number of people express gratitude towards that upgrade by the library, that traffic signal.
Great. Any comments or questions from the council?
Thank you. We're looking for an aye in particular. To the year or quarter end report, which should be on our next meeting agenda, which the the regular meeting two week, two weeks from now?
Yeah.
Two weeks from now.
Okay, I'll call our regular council meeting to order. Please, Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is sanctified. United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do you have an invocation, Mr. Schmidt?
No, Your Honor.
Roll call, please.
Alderperson Murphy?
Present.
Messias?
Present.
Rizak?
Present.
Timian?
Present.
Finch? McNeil?
Present.
Castro?
Present.
Schmidt?
Present.
Your Honor, I request the approval of Committee of the Whole, Council, and Executive Session Meeting Minutes of December ten, twenty twenty-four, Committee of the Whole, Council, and Executive Session Meeting Minutes of December seventeen, twenty twenty-four, appointments made at Committee of the Whole on January seven, twenty twenty-five, and consent agenda items sixteen point one through sixteen point three and seventeen point one through seventeen point seven inclusively.
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Timian, seconded by Castro. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Messias?
Aye.
Rizak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Non-consent agenda resolutions. Item number nineteen point one, a resolution approving the quotation from Elliott Equipment Company for the purchase of one twenty twenty-five Battle Motor LET-two tandem axle chassis with twenty-five cubic yard New Way Cobra Magnum rear loading utilizing Sourcewell contract number zero nine one two one nine dash N W Y for the amount of two hundred ninety-four thousand eight hundred dollars and authorizing the Assistant Director of Public Works to execute any necessary documents related to this purchase.
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Messias. Discussion? Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
I just only wish to state that I think they do a really excellent job of naming garbage trunk components.
All right. Anything further? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Messias?
Aye.
Rizak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Item number nineteen point two, a resolution approving the quotation and proposal with faster asset solutions to provide web-based fleet management software in accordance with the General Services Administration contract number four seven Q T C A two three D zero zero five four for a term of five years beginning in twenty twenty-five and authorizing the Assistant Director of Public Works to execute any necessary documents and do all things necessary to implement said transition.
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Messias?
Aye.
Rizak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Non-consent agenda, first reading ordinances. Item number twenty point one, and ordinance amending chapter two, administration of the Moline Code of Ordinances, section two dash two two zero zero, days, time, and place of regular meetings, adjourned meetings by enacting one new subsection E one B four concerning unexpected childcare obligations.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Rizak. Discussion? Mr. Schmidt?
I wanted to express thanks on the clarification that we had received regarding how that would impact children and executive sessions and some of those concerns that may come along with this. As someone who has just narrowly avoided running into some of those issues before, it is nice to understand that and just want to express appreciation.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Messias?
Should we say motion to advance the second reading?
Oh, yes, it was not a motion to.
Motion to advance to second reading.
Schmidt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Castro. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Messias?
Aye.
Rizak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion to advance to second reading carries. Item number twenty point two, and ordinance amending chapter twenty, motor vehicles and traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, appendix four thereof, three-way stop intersections by removing the intersection of Fifth Avenue and Fifty-third Street, South Branch, and amending chapter twenty, motor vehicles and traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, appendix five thereof, all-way stop intersections by adding the intersection of Fifty-third Street and Fifth Avenue, South Branch.
Motion to approve?
Motion to advance.
Motion to advance to second reading.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Timian, seconded by Rizak. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Messias?
Aye.
Rizak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion to advance to second reading carries. Item number twenty point three, and ordinance amending chapter twenty-two, offenses miscellaneous of the Moline Code of Ordinances, section two two dash one one zero five, tobacco products, tobacco accessories, smoking herbs, and alternative nicotine products regarding tobacco dealers licenses to create three categories of tobacco dealers licenses and to impose a temporary moratorium on the issuance of new licenses for Class A as defined herein.
Motion to advance to second reading? Second.
Motion by Messias, seconded by Timian. Yes, Ms. Kasopolis?
Thank you. So I just want to point out that in sub- Thank you, so I just wanna point out that in, uh, subparagraph two, little I, I'm not sure.
I, I.
Right, no, just I.
No.
We did note a Scrivener's error in the number of Class B licenses. So, la- uh, on, um, on the COW agenda, you would have seen this as Class B cap at thirty-five in print. The list reflects thirty-six. I said thirty-six when we went back and looked. Clerk Murphy noted that there was a Scrivener's error, so this is corrected here.
Thank you. Mr. Timian?
Uh, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to amend section or subsection two I, uh, and update the number of Class C licenses from five to six.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Timian, uh, and then seconded by McNeil. Yes, Mr. Timian?
And this, Your Honor, is just the, the, I, I feel a cleanup of we, we, we have a business, as, uh, legal counsel has pointed out, that is currently operating, uh, legally, and was not included on the list of existing businesses. This would give them an opportunity to reapply for a Class C license and.
And be at the limit.
And be at the limit.
Yeah, not cause an issue there.
Correct.
Yep. Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
If we move forward with this change at this time, that would mean that when it goes through, there would be six available applications, and if someone was sitting on that, they could just apply, and it wouldn't necessarily be that business. Is that correct? Because that, a business is not a current tobacco license holder.
I, I appreciate what you're saying, you are correct. Any number of businesses could apply for the new Class C.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
I do think we need to have a little more conversation regarding the entirety of that list, but given that the only prohibition we're putting in place is in Class A, I'm less concerned with the fact that putting this in place means we will likely have to turn right back around and consider that application expansion, which I think we would be very remiss not to grant as that one comes forward, but that person has to apply in order to get it, and so I am hesitant to build it into this. Because I am just concerned that that now, now some other business just pops in, and now they would automatically get it, and we're now opening another one, and not giving consideration of an additional shop at the right time. So I am not willing to make that change in advance, though I have every intention of granting them a license when they come back before the council.
There's a question here sort of about the pecking order of who's in line, and we talk about these things, the clerks and I, when dealing with all of this stuff with liquor or, um, gaming or tobacco. Because they're an existing business, do they not already come to the front of the line versus anyone who's, who would newly, uh, inquire?
The concern here is that currently there is no head shop license. And this business that you, uh, refer to is operating lawfully without a license. So it would be applying for a license it never had to have before, whereas the other, uh, current licenses, yeah.
So it's just sort of a, uh, on an uneven, um, playing field in some way? I see your point.
In considering whether to increase the cap to a- allow an available license for this on-licensed business, you do run into the concern that, well, maybe others are out there and they'd all apply simultaneously or, or right away. If that were the case, uh, as we, as you had done before, applicants, uh, for licenses will always then come before you for consideration.
So what this essentially means is if this, if, if the, if the council sort of agrees with Mr. Schmidt rather than Mr. Timian's, um, uh, amendment, uh, they would just be upping the cap at a later time when they make the application.
Right.
If they chose to vote that way.
Right.
Got it. Mr. Timian?
Few things. The fact that they're on this list as to be determined, doesn't that kind of imply it's reserved for them?
No.
Okay, um, my fear, worth a shot, my fear is that we now are going to create a situation where a legal business will be illegal for a month or more while it goes through COW first and second reading, which I don't think is our intention, until it gets that Class C license. Is that not what we're talking about?
One sec. Go ahead, Ms. Kostopoulos.
Well, you raised a decent point there. I, I would encourage them to make their application now. You know, any business that feels that they want to apply should always make their application without delay. And they would be, uh, one of those that I would encourage.
And this council certainly has the, the ability to fast-track that via either suspension of rules or moving it from ca- uh, first reading to second reading on the same night or some, if they wanted to sort of align it with when this, this particular ordinance comes up for second reading.
Correct, but to address that is, is to point out we thought maybe by increasing the cap, it would be immediately available.
Okay, got it.
But there are no downsides as well.
That, was that Mr. Macias' hand?
Well, yeah, I guess, is there somebody who's gonna reach out to them and say, hey, you need to get this done ASAP?
That's what, done through the clerks.
Yeah, so I would expect that if it's their likelihood, they're probably gonna move on it.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt, you had another comment?
Yeah, and I think, uh, in, you know, I see Alderperson Timian and I have the same objective in how we're trying to approach it. Um, and it's just thinking through the, the nooks and crannies, I guess I would hesitate to amend the motion until, if we do not have an application in hand, because I'm not necessarily inclined to approve an additional head shop. I think those, that becomes a, a conversation, but the ones already in place should, should come to be. Do we have a mechanism of delay that has to do with in anything where it's licensed, where they previously were not required to have a license, but now they do, I mean, does that delay thirty day, like, or do we need to put that in as well?
Ms. Kostopoulos?
So maybe a better motion is to grandfather in any ongoing or current businesses who are operating legitimately but will need a license after approval of the amended ordinance.
I would encourage you to withdraw your motion and make, someone make a new motion to that effect.
Your Honor, I withdraw my motion.
Thank you. Alright. That allows us to keep a cap, grandfather people in, and then make any adjustments in cap numbers down the road, but we're preserving the ability of someone to do their business. Would someone like to make the motion to grandfather any currently legally operating businesses of this head shop variety? That's what you're talking about, the Class C.
The Class C.
I would make that motion to grandfather in any legitimately operating the.
Class C.
Class C.
Businesses that would qualify or would be required to obtain a Class C tobacco license after passage of the current amended ordinance.
Second?
Yes.
Is it okay for her to say, uh, that motion is stated in combination with legal? Is there a second from Mr. Timian? Yes, Mr. Timian?
Should there be an expiration of the, I think, I want them to apply for licenses. So there should be, this should not be like a perpetual situation. We're acknowledging that there might be a business or two that is operating, we don't know about them, we gotta give it a little bit of time. So I would, uh, like to amend this motion to
Right.
to, um, have an expiration of the grandfathering uh, of ninety days after passage of the, um, council bill.
Second.
Got it, amendment to the mo- amendment uh, by Timian, seconded by Schmidt. Right, so we're gonna grandfather folks, they have ninety days to do it. And it, and that's it. Make sense? We're prepared to vote on the amendment to the amendment, so just the grant, the ninety day period
Correct.
at this point. All, uh, roll call, please.
Alderperson Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays?
Yes, seven ayes, no nays. Okay, now, we are voting on the amendment to the ordinance as amended. That includes the grandfathering statements. Correct. If there's no further discussion, all in fa- excuse me. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays.
Alright, so now we are back to the motion as amended. Mr. Schmidt?
As I alluded to, I had some questions looking at the list we have and understanding how it's being impacted. And we've addressed, I think, at this point, my concerns about the C licenses. My other concern is if, what, if, if anyone on this list is currently misclassified, we don't find that out until later. There's nothing in our moratorium that would prevent us from identifying that it was our mistake, and that we would just go back and change that cap number to appropriately, right? Or, or are we gonna prevent ourselves, for instance, if one of these businesses turns out is an A and should always have been classified that way, but we misclassified them? Uh, like, who, can we rectify that mistake once the moratorium's in place?
Yes, and remember that the, any, anyone currently holding a license is already grandfathered for the period of uh, the, their current license, so upon renewal, they will fall into a category.
So.
But, right, so nobody will be put out of business upon the effective date of this amended ordinance.
And they, and they won't be penalized either, correct? Because we have a renewal time to make sure everything is correct.
And should they be misclassified, upon renewal, they can apply for whatever appropriate license, uh, is called for.
Cause the moratorium is against new applications, not against us changing.
Correct.
So I think with us having taken care of that piece on the C, I was worried about the As and Bs. I'm still worried we don't have the list exactly where it's be, but I do think we can fix that, as you just said, so that should be fine.
I wanted to share with the council that this morning at our Illinois Intergovernmental Meeting, went through ByState, that's the mayors and administrators for the Illinois side of ByState. We meet once a month. Everyone was checking in with each other on our restrictions, our moratoriums. Sylvus weighed in, we weighed in, apparently Tom's weighed in yesterday at their meeting. Everyone's concerned and everyone's taking measures if they hadn't already had something. In addition, we were told that Quad City Health Initiative, which is, uh, partially sponsored through ByState, or we have representation, I was that rep, and now I believe Tom's is that rep now. They are really happy to see this work being done by these elected bodies. They shared stories of young children in elementary school, both sides of the river, doesn't matter where you live, bringing vape pens to school, covering up the smell by, by, um, chewing gum, et cetera, doing it in the bathrooms in the elementary schools. So, this is, you know, no one's immune to the impacts of this, and while we're not outlawing it altogether, I think we're trying to find a reasonable balance within our community. And I just wanted to share that information with you, cause it was a valuable discussion today. So, if there's nothing further, yes, Mr. Timian?
Just a, a general question, for, for things like this that have a specific date expiration, we just clean them up in a future code revision by removing that?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
And that could be anytime, really.
Correct. Alright, thank you. Uh, if there's nothing further, roll call, please, on the motion as amended.
Alderperson Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
That motion passes. Alright, we are to miscellaneous business. Wanted to let you know that I'm working with staff on this, this year's State of the City. We have it tentatively planned for Monday, February third, a morning experience as we had last year. So more details will be coming on that, and invitations will be going out to our community partners, um, as well, and our committees, et cetera. Uh, I will be at some mayor's conferences next week, and I always bring back information for you all and for the staff, so I'm looking forward to that. There's some valuable topics this year. And that is all I have for right now. Ms. Murphy?
I have nothing around it.
Nothing around me.
Razak.
No, thanks.
Timian?
I'd just like to acknowledge the passing of former President Jimmy Carter, who, um, I've always idolized primarily for the fact that he has walked the talk, which I, I think is a, a very, uh, i- it's missing in a lot of, uh, public servants, and, and I just think that his example was a great one uh, for all of us, and for our children, and for everyone in the community. Thursday is a national day of mourning, uh, officially, so I just wanted to, uh, acknowledge that and pay respects.
Thank you. Ms. McNeil?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Castro?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Nothing, Your Honor. Uh, Your Honor, thank you, I just wanted to mention that, uh, last month I finished, uh, teaching a junior achievement class at, uh, Lincoln Irving to fourth graders. It was a class on entrepreneurship, and we learned how to, uh, make a hot dog stand. And, uh, it was a lot of fun, so thanks to Bob and the council for, uh, making space for, uh, staff to go do something like that.
Thank you. Any other staff announcements? No? Okay. Any further public comment this evening? And we do not have executive session. So I need a motion to adj-
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Alright, motion by Schmidt, seconded by Macias, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.